The Leamester City Council meeting is funded in part by the Careless Insurance Agency at www dot thecarelessinsuranceagency dot com and by Avidia Bank at www dot avidiabank dot com.
Hold the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member in the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding to or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. Nobody has formally signed up, but I will ask, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? If so, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Once again, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? And for the third and final time, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? Seeing none, I declare the public forum closed. Okay, I'm now going to call the regular meeting of the Leamester City Council for August 28th, 2023 to order. Will you all please stand and join me? First salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now going to take a roll call of the honorable members of the Leamester City Council, beginning with Councilor Badanta.
Present.
Councilor Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Ardinger.
Present.
Councilor Angelini.
Present.
Councilor Brady.
Present.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Councilor Deacon.
Present.
Councilor Frida.
Present.
And I am present. All nine members are present this evening. Does the vice president have any records to report this evening?
Mr. President, thank you. I'm going to actually ask if we can put this on the next agenda. I did read over it once. I want the opportunity to read over it again. For any members of the council, if you have any corrections or any questions, please just email me or let me know ahead of time. But if we could put it on the next agenda.
Okay. Councilor Frida.
There are quite a few things that are, that should be changed in there. I don't know if that's why you're looking to preview them. I can give them to you now?
Either that or we have until the next, prior to the next meeting.
Well, I think, I think what some of these things on here are pretty important that the public should hear, actually.
Certainly.
The corrections to the comments regarding, missing my comments, and I will speak for myself, on 7/24, it was, it was clear that I mentioned it was, I was responding to constituent request to attend that DPH meeting. That was the reason that I was not here. The last part about the solar field project, that is seriously wrong. It states that I stated that a solar field is proposed at Oak Hill, a Leamester-owned piece of property in Pittsburgh. Clearly was not what I said, because I know we don't own property there. It's a proposal on Shea Street, property owned by Oak Hill, and our known town reservoir could be affected by that project if it isn't done correctly. So that's, that's a serious change. We don't own that piece of property, and I didn't say that. I also think we need to refer to the councilor across from me having a little bit of a debate about the city solicitor when I said I clearly did not agree with the opinion of the city solicitor. I did call Brian Riley to find out why he would say what he said, and he forward, he did send this letter forward after, which we never received. It was sent to Councilor Badanza with CC to David, Councilor Cormier, and Caitlin Huffman. It was sent on the 28th of July, but we never received it till the 21st of August. And I think it's pretty clear, it's what I had said the two meetings before about all the concern of the number of people that were calling me about going to the DPH hearing. And it clearly, I, I made the suggestion that if we recessed, we could come back after the DPH hearing and continue our meeting. However, according to Brian Riley, that's not what was said to him. So if you look at the second paragraph of his letter, very clearly states, it is my opinion, and if there is a motion to recess a meeting, it should include a time for the recess to end. Mason's manual says, for example, that a recess is only an interruption or a break in a meeting. After an adjournment, a meeting begins with the procedure of opening a new meeting. After a recess, the beginning of the business or proceeding of a meeting takes up the point it was interrupted. Purpose of a motion to recess is not to terminate the meeting or have no end time, but to pause the meeting so that council members and the public know when it will begin again. I think that's an important piece, because that's what I was suggesting, that we all do, if there were many of us that wanted to go to that meeting. I know some of them, some of us are at large, and we probably got the most requests to show up at that meeting, because it, it is the whole city. And I know for a ward council, or if it's not particular to that ward, might not have as many people concerned about having representation there. But I think the at-large councilors were getting, I know I was, getting a number of phone calls asking that we go, whether it be nurses, patients, mothers, prior mothers. There was a strong contingent, and it was very important to me to have that clearly stated, because I don't miss meetings unless it's really important. And this was important in my book. So I just, I will provide that information to you, Madam Vice Chair, and hopefully that will be corrected in the, in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Badanta.
I just want to make it clear that there was never any motion presented to us to recess to a time certain. And that was the point of Attorney Riley's opinion, that in order to recess a meeting, a public meeting, you need to have a, if you're going to leave the building, you need to have a time certain in which you're going to return, because it's important for members of the public, of course, to know when the meeting will resume, so they can be heard, or they can witness, or observe the meeting themselves. That was the whole point of it.
Councilor Frida.
I'm not disagreeing, but if you're going to call the city solicitor, you need to give them everything that was suggested. And the meeting before that, I clearly was trying to find a way for us that wanted to go to that meeting to be able to attend. And I know the open meeting law pretty well. I've taught it on the MMA. I've met with councilors on the open meeting law. So I take real offense to the fact that this letter is implying that some of us don't understand the open meeting law. I asked about going to the meeting, recessing this meeting, go to the DPH hearing, come back here, and continue our meeting. That was my request before. What happened after that, something else. But if you're going to call the city solicitor with one piece, you need to mention the whole thing, or put it in writing, because I'm not quite sure why you called as the ward four councillor and not the council president. And then the, the letter comes back to just three of you and not all of us. So, I mean, I-
Couple of, couple of things. First of all, you've got to have your timing correct. My call to the city solicitor occurred after Councilor Brady attempted to put a motion on the floor to recess the night of the DPH hearing. I did not call the city solicitor after your suggestion, never would have, only called as a result of the motion that was put forward by Councilor Brady. And as far as communicating with the city solicitor, if you go back in the memory bank, I was for the proposition, I forget the rule number, the president may remember.
I think it was 34.
34. Of going, going back to the practice that was in the past, that solicitations to the attorney only occur by the president or a member of a committee with a vote. You were a part of the majority that voted against that, changed the rule, which permits any city councillor to call the city solicitor directly.
I don't disagree. But if you're going to call the city couns, if you're going to call the city solicitor, I think they need to have all the information. You only talked about Councilor Brady. You didn't talk about the possibility that we could have done this more organized-
It wasn't relevant at the time. It was not relevant at that point. It was totally irrelevant.
No, because you chose to not make it relevant.
Okay.
I didn't ask for that. If you wanted to ask for that, you could ask for it.
Do we have any-
Totally irrelevant. That's the way you want to cast things.
Do we have any more questions about the minutes?
If we want to make, if we want to make-
Claire, forget about it, okay? Just forget about it.
Do we have any more questions about the minutes?
We wouldn't even have known this if, if, I don't even know who it was that brought it up.
Me.
To your attention.
Me.
No, this letter. We never got it until somebody brought it up.
I brought it to your attention at the last meeting.
No, I, I think somebody made a phone call. I don't know if it was Councilor Brady or Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
I had, I had sent an email to Brian Riley asking for a copy of the letter. And then I found out that it was sent to the city clerk. I want to know why we didn't get a copy that night, and what does "it was a handout" mean? I don't know what that means. In, in your response, you said, "It was a handout." We didn't get anything handed out to us.
It was left on your desk.
No, no, absolutely not.
Okay. Do we have any more questions about, what's on the agenda is the August 14th minutes. If there's something in the minutes that is not contained, see the vice president, and they will be, they will be contained in the city-
I will talk to the, yes, I will talk to the ward two councillor.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr, do you have any questions about the minutes?
I do.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, on page seven, Public Service Petition 2-24, the fact that it was in this calendar, and unfortunately, on tonight's agenda, the change was not made, it still is incorrect. And at the last meeting, we amended the petition so that it reflected the actual language, which is Prospect Street, not Manchester Street. So the fact that we amended it to change the petition so that it has the correct wording is not reflected in the minutes, and also is not reflected on tonight's agenda. So I wanted to make that point.
In the minutes, it has the motion to make the amendment. So it shows where it was originally and to what it was, should be, when the motion was made and voted on.
Where, where, what are you, what are you looking at?
I don't have the minute, the draft minutes in front of me at this moment, but in the minutes before it was amended, it will stay that way, because that's before it was amended. And then when it is amended, in the bolding of the section underneath, it will state when it was amended then. So it will-
It doesn't reflect, the minutes don't reflect that it was amended.
Does not, okay.
Does not reflect that. And on tonight's agenda, which should have the correct street, which is Prospect-
Oh, and it's-
It's, it's incorrect as well. So the amendment isn't reflected in the minutes, and then also, the amendment isn't reflected in the new agenda.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions about the minutes for August 14th, which are not going to be put on file tonight? The vice president is going to look them over and work with everybody to make sure that what is, what was done, said, will be contained in there. Okay, we are going to move on to communications from the mayor. C-9, Madam Clerk.
C-9, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, request the appointment of the following. Culture Commission, term to expire 4/15/2026. Joy Maguega, 25 Marlburn Terrace, Leamester, Mass. Donna Fiore, 27 Castle Street, Leamester, Mass.
And C-9 is going to be referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
And C-9 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-10.
C-10, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, request that an appropriation of $52,873.38 be made to the Highway Capital Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Capital Stabilization Fund.
And C-10 is referred to the chairman of finance.
First time on the calendar, regular course, please.
C-10 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-11.
C-11, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, request that the attached list of election workers for the 2023 to 2024 election season be appointed.
And C-11 is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
C-11 has been given regular course. Moving on to petitions, first time on the calendar, 4-24.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Councilor Frida.
Just through the chair to the clerk, does this, is this an adequate list? Does it give you enough election workers?
There's about 154 election workers, and will require five at minimum per each precinct. So that should give us enough if everybody shows up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Moving on to 4-24.
4-24, Caitlin Huffman, City Clerk, request that the city council adopt the election order for the November 7th, 2023 municipal general election.
And 4-24 is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course.
4-24 has been given, given regular course. 5-24.
5-24, Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Excuse me. Mechanic Street, National Grid, to install one jointly-owned pole on Mechanic Street, beginning at a point approximately 130 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Johnny Appleseed Lane, and continuing approximately 45 feet in a north direction. Install midspan pole approximately 40 feet west of pole number 8950 for new service from DOT traffic cameras on I-190, location approximately as shown on plan attached. Wherefore appraise that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith marked Mechanic Street, Leamester, Mass., that uses its number 30611455, July 28th, 2023. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by exclusively for municipal purposes.
Okay, and 5-24 is referred to the chairwoman of Public Service.
Thank you very much. It should, we should give that regular course with a referral to DPW, please.
Do you mind setting the public hearing, please?
Yes, I will. Where is that? And the public hearing will be set for September 11th, no, 2023, at 6:50 PM.
Okay. And just for the record, Madam Clerk, I'm going to need to abstain from this one, as well as 6-24, to, as far as, you know, voting on this, it is partially owned by my employer. But you've heard the recommendation to give this regular course with a public hearing for September 11th, 2023 at 6:50 PM. All those in favor signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to zero, this has been given regular course. A public hearing has been established. And moving on to 6-24.
6-24, Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Maple Ave, National Grid, to install one jointly-owned pole on Maple Ave, beginning at a point approximately 200 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Maple Ave and West Street. Install new pole number 184 on Maple Ave. Location approximately as shown on plan attached. Wherefore appraise that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith marked Maple Ave, Leamester, Massachusetts, number 30786056, July 18th, 2023. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in and above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes.
Okay. And 6-24 is also referred to the chairwoman of Public Service.
Regular course, please, with referral to DPW. And we do want to set a public hearing for September 11th, 2023, at 6:51 PM. And through the chair to the city clerk, a butters, because I know where this poll is going, is right in a nice yard, they will get notices of the public hearing.
They will.
They haven't gotten them yet, but they will get them.
No, we don't send them until we set the public hearing date. So since we set it tonight, we'll mail them out tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Councilor Cormier.
And perhaps through the chair to the clerk as well, I have a similar situation on the prior, on 5/24, with the Johnny Appleseed Lane. Yeah. A butters notice.
Yep. So we have a butters to a butters within 100 feet of the pole location being notified.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. So 6-24 has been recommended to give regular course with a public hearing for September 11th, 2023, at 6:51 PM, and a referral to the DPW. All those in favor of establishing that public hearing signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to zero, once again, I am abstaining on this one. The 6-24, the public hearing has been established. Moving on to matters before the city council. Mr. Chairman of Finance, do you have a financial report?
I do. We began the fiscal year on July 1st with a balance and stabilization account of $21,608,209. We did have interest earnings that were transferred in of $40,012 since the last report, leaving a balance in the stabilization account of $21,648,221. And there have been no transfers out. So that is the balance. And that is the financial report.
Okay, you've heard the financial report. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, moving on to items under finance, beginning with C-8. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. C-8, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, request the city clerk receives a stipend for being the city's registrar for elections. It is governed by Chapter 41, Section 19G, and is based on the city's population with a max of $1,500. We have a letter from our comptroller, dated July 28th. They are members of the city council. The city clerk receives a stipend for being the city's registrar for elections. It is governed by Chapter 41, Section 19G. It is based on the city's population with a maximum of $1,500. As of fiscal year '24, we have 35,262 voters. The stipend is $50 per thousand, so the math is 35 times 50, or 1,750. The clerk will receive the maximum $1,500 in quarterly installments of 375. I should point out that Chapter 41, Section 19H, provides a home rule opportunity for the city to, or a city or town to raise that to a maximum of $2,000, which Leamester has not accepted. So my position, Mr. President, is to grant C-8. This is actually not a option. It is required by the statute. And I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Councilor Cormier.
I agree.
And Councilor Angelini.
I'd just like to ask the clerk a question, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Through the chairman of finance. Madam Clerk, after reading the statute, are you, were you entitled to this last year as well?
Yes.
So is, is this going to be a retroactive stipend, or are you waiving last year's stipend?
Nope, just going forward.
On behalf of the taxpayers.
Thank you.
I would be in favor of this as well.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the finance committee to grant C-8. Is there any discussion? Councilor Badanta.
Just to circle the wagons, the, the current amount that the clerk receives is $1,300. So as the councillor from Ward 5 indicated, she did essentially forego the $200 last year.
Okay.
Difference between the two.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
So I just want to clarify, so through, through the chair to the clerk, so you have received a stipend. It wasn't up to the maximum. It probably is from an older calculation when the voting list was lower, I'm guessing.
Yes.
I mean, okay, all right.
The stipend's been around for quite a long time. On the correct part, to me, it's got in it. It's just our population has grown over the years, and it was never updated in the budgeting.
Okay, good. And that's to cover essentially the long day. I mean, Election Day is like a, an 18-hour day.
No, it's not specifically, it's to be part of the registrar of voter, registrars voters as the secretary, as is required by law. It's not for Election Day itself. So I act as a registrar. I'm the fourth.
So it's an additional compensation for being the registrar voters in the city?
Yes.
Required by the state?
Yes, required by law that the town or city clerk of a municipality be on the board of registrars for election purposes. And then the registrars also get a stipend.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on C-8? Seeing none, all those in favor of C-8 signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero. C-8 has been granted. Moving on to 3-24. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Yes. 3-24, Claire Frida, Councilor at Large, prohibit the city of Leamester from retaining any equity remaining on a taxpayers' property after all municipal tax liability incurred fees and charges have been satisfied after a foreclosure auction. If a property is sold after the city's liability has been met, all equity shall be returned to the property owner. Also, the city shall not engage with any third party that would participate in the practice of equity theft. There is a letter that we did, did refer this to the treasurer and the comptroller. There is a letter that we did, did refer this to the treasurer and the comptroller, and we have a letter jointly signed by the incumbent treasurer, the comptroller, and the assistant treasurer-collector, who is David LaPlante, our former treasurer. RE petition three dash 24, the city collector has the authority under Chapter 60, Section 40 through 50, to assign tax receivables in bulk by class before a tax lien is placed on those properties. The city treasurer has the authority under chapter law, general laws, Chapter 50, Section 52, to assign tax title receivables in bulk by class. In both cases, this must be done at a public sale or auction. Informational guideline release number 97 dash 201 by the DOR explains the complete process and the many requirements necessary to do these assignments. The collector treasurer's office for the city of Leamester has never, to our knowledge, sold or signed any tax receivables. The mayor, comptroller, and treasurer-collector have always been in agreement to never sell receivables and to only pursue payments through our own attorney using the tax foreclosure process. The treasury uses the foreclosure process only as a final act to collect unpaid taxes on properties with a serious tax delinquency. This only happens when owners are not willing to, unable to make payment agreements, get loans, mortgages, reverse mortgages, or sell their property to pay off the taxes and keep the remaining proceeds. Since this has been past practice for the city of Leamester's treasurer's office, we do not see this changing unless there are mandates or laws passed to change the process. Please let us know if you have any questions. I did have the clerk schedule a subcommittee meeting on this because I thought it was important, and I did want our former treasurer-collector present, Mr. LaPlante, because he has the most institutional knowledge about this of anybody currently working for us, and he unfortunately is not able to attend until September 19th, when we've scheduled a informational subcommittee meeting. It's comforting to know that we've never sold tax titles or foreclosed tax titles to any third parties. That's what sort of raised the Supreme Court case that led to the prohibition of equity theft. I question whether we have the authority as a city council to prohibit the city from engaging with any third party based on the first couple paragraphs of the three, of the letter from the treasurer-collector, the assistant, and the comptroller. I think it'd be appropriate, Mr. President, that in the, in advance of the meeting on the 19th, that we ask the city solicitor for an opinion on that, so we know what our options are with respect to that, because I know the petitioner is seeking a ordinance change, or at least potentially an ordinance change, that would maybe prohibit us from selling to third parties. These, these tax titles, again, we've never done it in the past, and it's clear under the current law that no one, third parties or cities or towns, can keep the spread between the just amount due, including all interest and penalties, in whatever the property derives from an auction. So I would ask, hearing all of that, I would ask that the three 24 would be given further time. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay, Counselor Cormier.
Yeah, I agree.
Counselor Angelini.
I'm in agreement as well.
Okay, so you've heard the recommendation of the finance committee to give three dash 24 further time. Is there any discussion? Counselor Freedom.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I've been following this for well over a year, and a couple of comments that the counselor across from me has made, and I guess talking about an ordinance change, that was my first question, and I brought it up to the clerk, why this would be in finance and not in legal affairs, because I really felt this is a legal issue, it's not a financial issue. However, it's in finance. The other thing is, I didn't think that the subcommittee meeting would be six weeks out. I am not going to be available that week, so I'm going to respectfully request that you change that meeting so that I'd be able to attend. I will be not here that week, so I would request that we do that. But just a few reasons why I submitted this. Banks have never been able to keep any equity when they foreclose on a property. I'm not surprised that our treasurer and our comptroller, there's no municipal official that would support this. It would be, it's a taxpayer protection. I am not the least bit concerned about this city, this council, or this treasurer, or this collector, or this comptroller, or the mayor. I firmly believe they would never do this to any of our taxpayers. But we're not going to be here forever. We've already had two different treasurers over the years that, we've had one treasurer for probably 30 years, and already we've had two different treasurers in there. So department heads are starting to change. And just a couple of fact, Massachusetts is only one of 13 states that have this law. And Senator Montigny of New Bedford, Representative Roy from Franklin, and Representative Atolo of Brookline have filed bills to stop this practice, because after the Supreme Court ruling in particular, it was done in Minnesota, and that, that case was won by the Supreme Court. This hurts seniors mostly, people with disabilities. The counselor across from me, from Ward Two, you know, would know, in, in her ward, probably, they're, you know, with elderly, we all have them, but this is a serious, serious issue. There were 315 homes that have been identified and impacted by home equity theft in Massachusetts alone, totaling $48 million. Average 82% of equity, $172,000 on the average house has been lost to people that this has happened to. Fifty, 65% of homes were forcibly seized for tax debt for less than the price of a six-year-old Honda, just a little fat. But the most important thing, there were two, I've watched this for over a year, like I said, because I could not believe that this was actually being done, and it's becoming more and more, and probably because there's a third party involved, and what happens, just so there's an understanding with the public, is that when a community has a lot of tax foreclosures, they, they bolt them, and there's a third party who takes it off their hands so they don't have to go through the foreclosure process. They'll take, they'll pay the bill, they'll pay the, the bill to the city of the tax that's owed and the fees that are owed, and then when they do that, they have the whole deed. They own the property, they, they own the people's property, and then it's sold. And it's been creeping up, it's been mostly in the Lawrence area, the Springfield area, out of that $48 million, that's a lot. But most recently, there's been a woman in Worcester, and I think this is a really clear example. The woman bought her house in 1976, she paid the house off in 1996, after 20 years, worked at TJ Maxx, and then got very sick, had a $2,500 tax bill, wasn't able to pay it. Worcester is in the practice of selling to a third party. That was sold, bolted with some others. She lost her house with, and to pay that $2,500 tax bill, she lost $300, $300,000 in equity. The woman had nothing after all those years because she got sick. And that's not unusual. We've had a pandemic, we've had a lot of issues that could be affecting people, and I think it's really important. The fact that we've never done it in this city is, is a great thing. By the same token, the fact that we've never done this in this city should not affect anything by putting this law in to make sure whoever comes after all of us, it never happens again. This is, to me, is a no-brainer, to protect our taxpayers and to never let this happen to anybody who gets sick. It's disabled veterans have been hit very hard on this, and elderly people have been hit. So, you know, I would ask that people look into this and really see the value of this law. The Pacific Legal Foundation has taken the beginning step on it. It's very well-known, I talked to our state representative, who is on top of it with, with these representatives that are supporting it. So I think it, we know how state moves slowly, and I'd just like to see our people protected so this, this won't happen to them, it could never happen to them. So with that, I will ask, I know we have to support further time, but I will ask that that meeting date be changed and hope that we can get more details on it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I just want to confirm that, you know, I certainly would not want the author of the petition not to be able to attend the subcommittee meeting, so I'll ask the clerk to coordinate another date the following week.
Thank you.
Counselor Angelini, did I see your hand?
You did. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to clarify, the at-large counsel mentioned that Supreme Court case. It's important to note, in that Supreme Court case, that the court found that that practice is in violation of the Fifth Amendment taking clause. So it also put the other states on notice. So, I mean, any, going forward, I think in light of that landmark case, anybody pursuing that practice is on pretty shaky ground. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that it's, it's not without merit, but the fact that the court, if you read the court's ruling, it's clear that it's, it's a violation of the Constitution. So I think going forward, you're going to see other states comply, because again, Supreme Court, law of the land. So I think that's a big step forward in ending this practice, that the city of Leamester, by the way, has never been engaged in, and I'm glad that was mentioned as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Counselor Freedom.
Through the chair to the Ward Five counselor, that's absolutely correct, but we're one of 13, and Minnesota was one of those court, one of those in that 13.
Yeah, that's right.
And it doesn't necessarily carry over. Shaky ground is, is, is a good term, but it's still a possibility that Massachusetts law could look at it differently, so without some protection.
Supreme Court is the law of the land. When that, when they make a decision, state court can't overrule the Supreme Court. So that's the law of the land.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to be that sure about it, but it should be.
Yeah.
It should be. If that were the case, then all 13 states would have no, no bearing, but they're not all changing it quickly, so.
Okay, is there any other discussion on three dash 24? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving this further time signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, three dash 24 has been given further time. Moving on to C dash five, items into legal affairs. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. C dash five, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, move that the city council of the city of Leamester, on behalf of the city, and by virtue of, and in accordance with, the authority granted by Chapter 82, Section 21 dash 24, and Chapter 79 of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended, in any and every other power and authority which is here unto in any way enabling, take by eminent domain for public way purposes the fee simple title in, and to the roadways shown as Sawtell Road, Richard Road, and Montrose Street on a plan entitled Road Acceptance Plan, Leamester, Mass., prepared for Johnny Appleseed Realty LLC, dated May 2019, prepared by David E. Ross Associates LLC, and recorded with the Worcester North Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 523, page 25, and to confirm the rights granted to the city by deed, recorded with said deeds in Book 9733, page 174, which roadways were accepted by the city council as public ways pursuant to a vote taken by the city council on January 13th, 2020, and in connection with the foregoing, adopt and execute the order of taking provided this date by council, and having determined that no damages are due for said taking, and the owners affected by the taking, having waived all damages, hereby award no damages for the taking of said land, and further execute any and all other documents, and take any and all other actions as may be necessary or appropriate to accomplish the foregoing. If you recall, this was amended at our last meeting. The, the original names of these streets was submitted with the original petition. We amended this, so it properly reflects the legal names of the roadways that are proposed to be taken, and I was, we were waiting, if you recall, for a couple referrals, one from the DPW and one from the planning board. Both of those referrals are in, and at this time, I'd like to read those into the record, if I may. The first one is from the DPW and Director, it's dated August 16th, 2023. RE Communication C5, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the city council grant the order of taking in relation to Sawtell, Richard, Sawtell Road, Richard Road, and Montrose Street, as shown on plan entitled Road Acceptance Plan, Leamester, Mass., prepared for Johnny Appleseed Realty LLC, dated May 2019, prepared by David E. Ross Associates LLC, and recorded with the Worcester North Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 523, page 25. Address to Caitlin Huffman, City Clerk. Dear Caitlin, the Leamester Department of Public Works has reviewed the communication to grant the order of taking in relation to Sawtell Road, Richard Road, and Montrose Street. The DPW approves the communication as submitted. Please let us know if you have any questions. Sincerely, Raymond Racine, DPW Director. We also have a letter from the planning clerk. It's dated August 22nd, 2023, addressed to Caitlin Huffman, City Clerk. Our RE council petition C dash five, authorizing the taking of the fee to Sawtell Road, Richard Road, and Montrose Street, and the order of taking. Dear Caitlin, on 8/21/23, the planning board voted seven to zero to make a positive recommendation to the city council petition C dash five, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, move that the city council, on behalf of the city of Leamester, on behalf of the city by virtue and of, and in accordance with the authority granted by Chapter 82, Section 21 dash 24, and Chapter 79 of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended, and any and every other power and authority which is here unto in any way enabling, take by eminent domain for public way purposes the fee simple title in, and to the roadways shown as Sawtell Road, Richard Road, and Montrose Street on a plan entitled Road Acceptance Plan, Leamester, Mass., prepared by Johnny Appleseed Realty LLC, dated May 2019, prepared by David E. Ross Associates LLC, and recorded with the Worcester North Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 523, page 25, and to confirm the rights granted to the city by deed, recorded with said deeds in Book 9733, page 174, which roadways were accepted by the city council as public ways pursuant to a vote taken by the city council on January 13th, 2020, and in connection with the public ways pursuant to a vote taken by this, I'm sorry, I read that twice, in connection with foregoing, adopt and execute the order of taking provided this date by council, and having determined that no damages are due for said taking, and the owners affected by the taking, having waived all damages, hereby award no damages for the taking of the land, and further execute any and all other documents, and take any and all other actions as may be necessary or appropriate to accomplish the foregoing. Please do not hesitate to reach out if you have any additional questions. Best regards, Stephanie Witten, Principal Planning Clerk. So with those two referrals on record, it would be my position that we adopt this order of taking, and I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Badanza.
I'm in favor.
And Counselor Deacon.
I'm in agreement.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation to adopt the taking of which is petition C dash five as amended, correct? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash five signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C dash five has been granted. Moving on to items in the public service, two dash 24. two dash twenty-four. This piece of equipment is partially owned by my employer, so as customary, I do need to abstain. So Madam Vice President, I'm going to ask, since I will be stepping away for two dash twenty-four, there is also another item under the community calendar that I believe was generated from, actually, I think when you were talking about this petition the last time, the third bullet, which is the letter to National Grid. All that equipment that you'll be talking about jointly owned poles and things are owned by my employer, so I will be abstaining from that as well. So if you'd like to have that discussion while I'm away, and then I'll come back.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. President. Two dash twenty-four, I'm going to send that to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
Thank you very much. This is two dash twenty-four, Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA, National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc. Request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. As I mentioned earlier, this should say Prospect Street. We did amend the petition to indicate the correct street, so it's Prospect Street. National Grid to install one jointly owned pole on Prospect Street beginning at a point approximately three hundred and thirty-five feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Main Street and Prospect Street. Install new pole number three dash fifty on Prospect Street. Location approximately as shown on plan attached. Wherefore appraisers that have to do notice and hearing is provided by law, be granted that a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires together which such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary, said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here in marked Prospect Street, Leominster, Massachusetts, number three zero seven eight five seven six nine, June twentieth, 2023. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. At our last meeting, we amended this two dash twenty-four to be correct in terms of the street and then also gave it further time because the Ward One Counselor had asked for more time to connect with his constituents.
And I appreciate that. Thank you. I did indeed meet with the property owner. He stated he never received any abutter's notice, but appreciated the fact that I was informing of it, showed him the plan. He had no issue with it. So I, but I don't know what to tell you. He's saying he didn't get a notice.
Hmm. That's a problem. Could you identify what property it is so I can get the tracking number and share it with the council?
That'd be great. Yeah, it's, I'll get the number for you.
It might be on the plan.
I have the business name there.
It's a business? Does he rent or does he own?
Couldn't.
Because it goes to whoever's on the reported deed?
Yeah, I couldn't tell you. It would be Twenty-five Prospect.
Twenty-five Prospect?
So being that he has no, no issue with it, I'm fine with it.
Thank you. So.
So through the chair to the City Clerk. So you'll follow up on that and make sure, I mean, I don't know how you can determine that.
Yeah, so when we send out a certified mail letter, it has, it's called a green card, and it has a tracking number on it, and we can just look it up on the U.S. Postal Service website to see where it was.
Okay. That would be helpful if you would let us know at the next meeting.
Sure.
That you found it and whatever happened. Because I know the next two that are coming up might be very sensitive.
Okay, yeah.
So it's important that the abutters get noticed. Thank you. So my recommendation at this point, Madam Chair, would be to grant two dash twenty-four, and I would ask that you poll my committee members.
Certainly. And City Public Service, sorry. Counsel Frieda?
I agree.
And Counsel Brady?
I'm in agreement.
So you've heard the unanimous recommendation from the Public Service Committee to grant two dash twenty-four. Are there any other comments, questions? And seeing none, all those in favor, please verify by the, by, oh, raise a hands, please. And by a vote of eight to zero, two dash twenty-four has been granted. Sorry, allergy season. And Madam Chair, Public Service, as the President indicated, we also have under community calendar, if we can jump to that. Section three, under community calendar, was the letter to National Grid, if you'd like to address that and give us an update where you are there.
Right, certainly. I think everybody got a copy of the letter. After our last meeting or during our last meeting, we had discussed about reaching out to them because a couple of counselors raised concerns about the large number of double utility poles. This has been an ongoing problem. They're not only ugly, but they do pose potentially, you know, serious accidents that could happen. So City Clerk drafted a letter. I reviewed it, made some edits, and then we did send it to Brian Riley. The clerk sent it to Brian Riley, who has not gotten back to us yet because he was out of the office. But I would say, did you send it?
I haven't sent it yet. I only sent it to Brian because I wanted to wait until I got your okay.
Okay. I think the letter is fine. I'd still want to get Brian, you know, if Brian has anything to add or change, whatever, we can deal with that later. But I would like the letter to go to National Grid because it, again, it's a, it's a serious problem that we want them to address. And in the letter, we asked them to come up with a plan, let us know, you know, how they're going to deal with these in the future, which I think is very reasonable, and offered any assistance that we could provide.
Is it okay for me to send tomorrow then?
Please do.
Sure.
Please do. Yeah, thank you.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Sure.
And I was reminded of this today, so I can't take all the credit for it. But I was reminded that most of these poles are owned jointly by National Grid and Verizon. And if I'm not mistaken, at one point, this question had come up before, and I knew it came up in my ward, that National Grid was in charge of putting up the poles. Verizon has the obligation to remove. So I understand the letter going to National Grid. My only suggestion would be perhaps if we include Verizon in that, because if that is the situation, that's my recollection of it, is that one National Grid, in this case, is in charge of putting up the pole, but it's my understanding, my belief, that it was Verizon's responsibility when it comes to taking them down. So perhaps if we can get a plan, I'm just suggesting adding Verizon and sending the letter to them as well.
We can certainly do that. I think that's a good, I think that's a great idea. Thank you very much.
Yeah, just to add to that, in doing research, there is a clearinghouse in the state that all the utilities and cable companies, and there's a, there's a pecking order on how it's to be done. So they've addressed it, and it's generated by computer and it's sent to the company. So what's happened in the past is they said, oh, we didn't know about this, and they just kind of played back and forth. But now there's a clearinghouse, so.
Okay.
That's a great, great idea.
Hang on. I saw, clear Frieda's hand.
Yeah, I was just, through the chair, I was just going to say that I agree with that. As I said at the last meeting, Counsel Annickel was nuts about this kind of stuff. And this has been an ongoing issue. They want to both blame each other. Mass Electric wants to blame the telephone company, and then the telephone company blames Mass Electric. And, you know, jointly owned, it's like, it's like a divorce. You know, who's going to take the responsibility? So I think it's a good idea to send it to both. I don't know if there'll be a resolution. Obviously, there hasn't been any yet, so.
But certainly not going to hurt. And Counsel Badanza?
Yeah, I was just going to add, the fellow that was here for National Grid at the last occasion suggested the holdup with this thing often is equipment owned by the other, whether it's Verizon or somebody else that hasn't been removed yet from the pole, which is holding up the process. So I think the Vice President and Acting Chair's suggestion is a good one for that basis, on that basis as well.
Thank you.
Yep. Through the chair to the City Clerk. Can you find out more information on the clearinghouse that the Ward One Counsel referred to? If there's a state agency or somebody that has a clearinghouse, my question would be, how does the information get put in there? And then how, how does it work? So that we can, if, you know, if somebody's doing this work and organizing and assessing for each particular double pole, who is the responsible party? That would be really helpful to know.
I can research that.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Counsel Ardenger? Thank you very much. Is there any way, I know it's probably a monumental task, but is there any way of getting an inventory of how many double poles are in the city? I took a chance and drove around, and there are tons. And there's one in particular on Low Street that someone complained to me many years ago, and it's got one little silver box hanging on that second pole. And it's what you're talking about, I think, is, you know, Verizon may, may own, or a cable company may own that, that little silver box, and they haven't moved it. So it's, you know, I think we need to get a grasp of how big this problem really is. I mean, we.
Counselor, if I may, doing research with it, by the utility company's numbers, which I think are way off, they say there's eighty-nine double poles in Leominster. There are three double poles just on Prospect Street.
Not a chance.
We have a hundred and eighty-four point five three miles of roads in this city. You can't tell me if there's three on a two-mile stretch, there's only eighty-nine. Agreed.
Okay. I think those are all good suggestions.
Good questions, yep.
All right. So are we okay on that? Any other questions, concerns? I think we've got a good launching pad now for that. All right. So we're going to go back to the agenda, and we'll call our City Council President back out here.
Did he fall asleep?
He might have.
I can see him move.
He might have, Frank. Welcome back, and I'm relinquishing my responsibilities back to you.
Thank you very much. Moving on, and then I'm going to throw it right back to you. Moving on to items under Ways and Means, we have appointments, C dash seven. Madam Chairwoman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests the reappointment of the following individuals to Waits and Measures for a three-year term, term to expire on four fifteen, 2026. Joseph A. Quinn, Inspector of Waits and Measures. Mark Stiles, Deputy Inspector of Waits and Measures. And William Sharptier, Deputy Inspector of Waits and Measures. This was on for regular course at our last meeting. I think we have met every member of the Waits and Measures Department. They have come in at some point. Over time, they do a great job. It would be my recommendation that we grant the reappointments, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counsel Ardenger?
I certainly agree.
And Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree as well.
Okay. So you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant C dash seven, which is these appointments. Is there any discussion? Counsel, Counsel Brady?
I'm just curious. The reappointment of all three, shouldn't they be staggered so we have consistency if someone leaves? Should we do a five-year appointment, four-year, and three? I don't know if it's part of the, I'm just wondering. Most other departments have staggered.
Right.
Right?
No. No, they typically all have a certain set three-year term expiring from whenever they're first appointed, after three years on the fifteenth of April. But we haven't reappointed our Waits and Measures sealers for years because I just finished doing a project with the Mr. Quinn, going back for years, and this actually happens quite often, just randomly kind of spots out and comes back in, and it's a big group of people consistently every so many years.
All right. I'm just wondering if it would be for more consistency on the.
Yeah, the ordinance tells us we have to do it for at least three years.
Okay. Counselor Angelini?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to note that, you know, I never realized just what these guys do down at Waits and Measures until we took a look at the fee schedule and revised it last year. And it's truly amazing, the tasks that they, they struggle with, everything from barcode reader machines to, I mean, phone implements. So I just think it's misleading. It sounds like, you know, the Waits and Measures guys probably work part-time, but they're, they're all quite busy, everything from gasoline to, again, UPC codes. So I'm certainly looking forward to confirming these appointments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash seven signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C dash seven has been granted. Is there any other, any new business? Any old business? We have one second reading of an ordinance, which is formally Petition one dash twenty-four. Mr. Chairman of Legal Affairs, are you ready to report?
I am indeed, Mr. President. Thank you. Again, this is a second reading of an ordinance that was submitted by the Ward Four Counselor, and it requests to amend Chapter thirteen entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Section thirteen dash seventy-five, speed limits specific streets by inserting the following Manchester Street at twenty-five miles per hour. It was a public hearing in July twenty-fourth on this, and we had the first reading of the ordinance at our last meeting. So I will proceed. This is a second reading of an ordinance in the year 2023. In ordinance, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows, amend Chapter thirteen entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Section thirteen dash seventy-five, speed limits specific streets by inserting the following, Manchester Street at twenty-five miles per hour. Mr. President, it would be my recommendation that we adopt the second reading of this ordinance, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee, please.
Okay. Counsel Badanza?
I'm in favor.
And Counsel Deacon?
I'm in agreement.
Okay. So you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the second reading of this ordinance. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Badanza.
Yea.
Counsel Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel Ardenger?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Brady?
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Deacon?
Yea.
Counsel Frieda?
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. The second reading of this ordinance has been adopted. We have two more bullets under the community calendar. One of them was the future of the high school band. There was an email that was sent to the superintendent and shared with the council. Counsel Frieda, I don't know if you have any information or if, Madam Clerk, you've heard back. I know you sent an email, so.
I provided everybody with a letter today that we received because it was the first day back to school, and the band director was able to reply.
I did, I did see that here. Counsel Frieda, do you have any comments about the letter? I don't know if you had a chance to look it over.
I just had a chance to look it over quickly, and it's nothing that any other band hasn't dealt with over the years. I mean, my daughter was in the band for eight years, and they were middle school rebuilding back then, and it's gone into middle school quite often. I know Rick Votor was the one that initially was upset on Memorial Day. So if this has had, if there's been a conversation after that, we sat down with Rick Votor in March, he said. I don't know that Rick agreed because he was upset that morning. That's where this came from. So hopefully, they've worked something out. But there are two major ceremonies a year, Veterans Day and Memorial Day, and I think it's important, and to check with other communities, I don't disagree. You check with other communities, see what they're doing. But if you also check with other communities and see how their Veterans and Memorial Days go, they're pretty bad compared to our veterans that show up for everything. So I think our band should be able to show up for at least those two things. That was, there was always a lot of pride with our kids that wanted to do that for years. So I would like to see that continue. But I'm not the band director, and the veterans are going to have to speak up if it, if it ends up bothering them and see how Rick feels about it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you for checking on it.
Anybody else have any questions or comments regarding this issue? Seeing none, Oak Hill Solar Fields. Anybody have anything new to report on the happenings there? Counselor Angelini, I think that affects or could affect close to your ward.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this was brought up by the at-large counselor at our last meeting. I did reach out to the mayor, first of all. I spoke with the mayor and suggested, I thought it'd be a good idea to talk to Mark Pomerini. I know that he had requested and was, and received the USGS map and a copy of the plans that were submitted by Haley Ward, the engineering firm that's handling this, for the solar farm. I know that he had requested and was, and received the USGS map and a copy of the plans that were submitted by Haley Ward, the engineering firm that's handling this, for the solar farm project. In the meantime, some of the mayor suggested that I speak with Nicholas Kremp, our conservation agent, and, which I did, and I provided Nick with some history on how the city came to own No Town Reservoir, talked about the acts of, special acts of legislature nineteen twenty-seven, up to the Pittsburgh industrial park that was proposed by the Pittsburgh Redevelopment Authority. To my discovery, that seven homes were discharging raw sewage into Shea Brook, which obviously is attributed to No Town Reservoir. So fortunately, that has since been corrected, but there's a long history there. Shea Brook, it's, it's tucked away, very few people, I think, are even aware that it's attributable to our, our water supply. And it is classified as an outstanding resource water. It has the most stringent classification the DEP gives any piece of property, any resource that falls under their jurisdiction. So right now, Mark Pemmarini and Nick Kremp are both doing, gathering facts. I also had the privilege of speaking with a member of the Pittsburgh Conservation Commission, who gave me, you know, some rough numbers. It's basically thirty acres of land will be cleared if this project is approved. The area that this is being proposed for is extremely, is a slope that's unsuitable for housing development, so this would probably be one of the only uses that this land would be viable for. I was also, so this question was raised by the conservation agent, why didn't they go in from Oak Hill Road? They, they have land on that side as well. And again, I think it's, it's for the aforementioned reason. This land would be very difficult to develop. I think its value is probably less significant than the frontage and the other land that the, that these folks may own on Oak Hill Road. But it does indeed drain down towards Shea Brook. So it will be something that I think we're going to have to keep a close eye on. We need to, again, gather some more information. But I would say by our next meeting, we should, we should have our compass pretty well set and have some basic understanding of how we're going to proceed if we are. But again, it all depends on, on what, you know, this investigation, a fact-finding mission right now that's going on between the Water Department, Conservation Agent, and, I mean, I can tell you, there are people in the city of Pittsburgh who aren't too happy about this either, so. But it's in, it's still in its infancy. I was told at the last Conservation Commission meeting in Pittsburgh, actually, that their agent, who's newly appointed, suggested to the Commission and to the applicant that perhaps it would be a better idea for them to move this project out of the buffer zone, and therefore it wouldn't fall under the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction. So that's something that I think the proponent is, is entertaining, and if that happens, it's going to probably remove, you know, some, some watchful eyes and put this on a different, you know, different trajectory. So it's something that certainly warrants our attention, and I'm confident that the proper people are conducting the fact-finding mission, and I think in a couple of weeks we'll have a much better idea.
Okay. And I, and I did, I did catch part of this meeting on FATV. I, I get them, and it was very well attended and by Pittsburgh residents, and there was a lot of opposition. So if anybody has any concerns and wants to hear what, what's going on, it's, it's still airing, I think, on FATV, or they can catch it on FATV's website. I'm sure that there's a link, and you can, you can play it on demand anytime you wish. So, Council Frida?
I watched that entire meeting, and that's, that's why I brought it up last time. I had a friend that lived up there and asked me to watch it, because she wasn't sure what's, what's going on. And it is a question of the buffer zone and whether they take it out of there or not, but the main point that they were making at that point was that the planning board meeting is going to be crucial, because that's where this could actually take a turn. Planning board have the authority to reject that. But, you know, the neighbors, the neighbors have had some major issues as well up there. And they had FEMA money that corrected a big part of their problem, and they don't want to go backwards, so. And I think that's what makes a big difference on us protecting what we have as well. So, you know, I've been kind of watching that, and then the planning board meeting is going to be just as important, and I think that's coming up in, at the end of September or the beginning of October at this point.
Okay. Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yeah, thank you very much. I know all of us, late this afternoon, got a, the mayor forwarded a letter, which is the city's attorney's most recent response to UMass's proposal to close the maternity unit. And I think it's important for the community to know how hard the city is fighting this. The mayor has done an excellent job of working with outside counsel, preparing a very solid defense, and I think detailed responses and rebuttals to UMass's response to the Department of Public Health's recent letter. So the process is, UMass proposed to close the maternity unit, the Department of Public Health came out to Lemonster on July twenty-fourth, then had a public hearing. DPH had two weeks to send UMass Memorial all of the information and the objections to the closure, and then UMass would respond back to DPH. So UMass did provide a response to DPH, which, when I read, I thought, I, I was pretty stunned. I thought, there isn't a concrete, specific thing that has been part of their planning. They have no information. And in their letter, they actually talked about prospectively and after the closure, looking at the impact that the maternity closure would have. Makes no sense. So the, the city's legal counsel wrote a very detailed, and I think a really solid letter, that picked apart in a lot of detail, UMass's irresponsible, thoughtless, and not very well-planned effort at closing the maternity unit. So I think people in the community should know, the city is working really hard to save that unit, because it impacts not only local jobs, it impacts the life, the health, the safety of local families, as well as the impact that it will have on local services. One of the most important things, I think, that everybody, it will stick with people is, you know, our new ALS service. Well, if they have to now bring, you know, birthing people to hospitals that are in Gardner, or, you know, Concord, or Worcester, that will really impact the access that local people in Lemonster have to those advanced life support systems. So I think it's important for the community to know this. The mayor's been working very closely with lawyers and other groups, and he is putting up a really good fight that I, I'm very, very happy about, and happy to join him in.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Council Angelini?
I just, I just wanted to weigh in quickly on, follow up on the at-large counselor's point, that, you know, before I had a public hearing that night at six fifty-nine, I was standing next to the other at-large counselor at the public health hearing, and the most prescient comment that was made in my presence was by the state senator, John Cronin. And Senator Cronin made the point that last year, the legislature gave eighty million dollars to that organization. And when did they announce the closure of this birthing center? The day after the window for filing supplemental appropriations closed. So clearly, that was, that wasn't an accident, and so they were thumbing their nose at the folks that were giving them eighty million dollars, in essence. So I thought, well, we don't give them any money, so they don't, probably don't give a tinker's damn what we think. But I do agree, the mayor's done a wonderful job with outside counsel, and they're turning over every rock to hold Health Alliance responsible. And so now we have to let the clock tick, and we'll see what happens. But thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. I think that's what, three weeks it's set to close, right? Three, three weeks from now is, is, is the deadline, and they've been pretty, they've been pretty adamant that that is the deadline, so it's going to be interesting.
That's right. But they haven't provided any transportation plan, they haven't provided any other information about where people can actually go. There isn't any capacity. Worcester people, Worcester nurses are saying, look, we don't have the capacity to take care of the people that we're supposed to in Worcester right now. And that was what UMass was saying, is, oh, they can go to Worcester and deliver there. No, they can't, local people. So this is an ongoing fight, there's, you know, it's, it's not over.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll continue to monitor that as well. Is there anything else under the community calendar? Council Cormier?
Thank you. Two things, actually. First of all, I think on behalf of all of us, we want to wish the kids a great school year coming up. They start tomorrow. Just a reminder to everybody to leave a little extra time in your commute. Let's respect the kids getting on the buses, the bus routes. I know I have mornings that I have to time it just right, so if everybody gives themselves a little extra time. The second thing, Mr. President, I just wanted to point out, and just to remind people to go on the city's website, the city clerk's website, the mayor's office, the list, and I was quite shocked at the schedule of events coming up for September and October. They take up a whole page. So if you're looking to do anything with the kids, Lemonster is certainly full of activities, great family activities, so that was it. My two cents worth.
Okay. Council Frida?
I just want to mention to everybody who wasn't there, and it sounded like just about everybody was there, at the open house for the police station. When we planned it, we really didn't think that we'd have the numbers that we had. It was incredible. I, I know we're well over seven or eight, maybe nine hundred people that came through the building. And it, I don't think I had, I heard a bad comment, maybe a couple of suggestions, but I don't think there was a bad comment at all. I think people were shocked, every opportunity I had. Serving on that committee was, was pretty gratifying to be able to say, yeah, this is thirty-three million dollars, and we're not raising anybody's taxes. And I think people had a hard time actually believing that that wasn't going to happen. So it's a credit to the mayor's office and the committee that's been working for three years to, pretty much every other week, for quite some time, to put it together, and we were very lucky in a lot of, we just were under the gun when we bought the, the steel in the beginning, and the prices went crazy right after we bought it. And I think every step of the way, we're pretty much the same position. So it's a beautiful building. I think the police are very happy, they're, they're not quite all the way in yet, but it's, it was a good day. Hopefully, we'll do it again with a ribbon cutting soon, once all the landscape is done, and it's, it's just a real credit to the city.
Absolutely. Council Bedanza?
Yeah, I echo the counselor at large's comments, and I just want to mention, it was a very touching tribute to our own former colleague, James Lancy, Jimmy, where they dedicated the police training room to him and his family, some of his family at least was there. And I'm privileged and honored to be a part of that, and thank Jimmy once again for all his service to this community.
Great, thank you. Any other, any other comments under the community calendar? Seeing none, motion to adjourn. Council Shalfo Zephyr is her second. Council Angelini, all those in favor of adjournment signify unusual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, we are now adjourned.